All right. The call of the meeting is ordered, roll call. Danny.
Here.
Damon.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Diana.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
And I'm also here. The meeting's been properly noted, sir and sir. All right, please join me in the pledging of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion or a petition, Damon?
I will.
Thank you.
Mount Hore Berry School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you very much. All right. To A, before anybody approves it, we are going to do a little mixing around because we've got a lot of students and parents who have to get other places. So 6C, so we're going to do everything up until 6, and then 6 is going to go a little crazy. So 6C's going to go first, then 6B, then 7B, then 7C, and then 7A, if everyone's okay with that. I wrote it down, so you don't have to memorize it. So, do I have a motion to approve? All right.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Approval of the February 4th, 2019 Regular and Executive Session Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Kimberly. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. 3A, school news.
Hi, Kennedy, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good to see you. What's cooking in the world of the high school?
Um, it's kind of a busy week, actually. It still hasn't been the high school's first full week back because on Wednesday, the juniors take the ACT. But FFA is also celebrating the FFA, like, I'm sorry if I pronounce this wrong, but National FFA Week. So they're doing stuff at lunch and activities. And then this Saturday, band kids are performing at Solon Ensemble. So there's a lot of nervous and excited kids getting ready to perform. This previous weekend, Student Council put on their twerp dance. So that was, had some big changes to it, especially with the dance team. So that went off better. And instead of doing like food for it, we donated food to the like take-home program at the high school. So we were able to raise or donate over 250 canned food items. So that was really good. And then we had state swimmers also on Saturday, so that was very exciting. And then I think that's most of it.
Yes, the Student Council did a wonderful job with Saturday evening's dance. I've heard great things about that. And also a special note of gratitude to our staff for helping us with the Solon Ensemble we're hosting for the entire area here. So that's quite an undertaking in terms of scheduling. And let's just hope the weather stays on our side this week. And it relates to my report, if this evening had a theme, it must be Career and Technical Education because it's Career and Technical Education Month, and there's a number of opportunities to celebrate and showcase the great things that are happening in our schools. And it is a celebration. So there's some food here for students and staff and visitors. I baked the cookies myself this afternoon with the help of my friend Sam from Sam's Club. Help yourself. And there's some granola for those of you who are, you know, healthy like me. So please enjoy this. A couple of other things, if you don't mind me highlighting. In addition to Solon Ensemble, we have been taking some time now as a school community over the course of the past six to eight months to talk about mental health and wellness. And when I visited with the high school students this summer, they were, they were very clear in their ask of the school district's administration to make certain we were doing things for our young people, not just for our high school kids. And I'm pleased to tell you today, we delivered on that. In this very room, we were very pleased to welcome Lindsay Doolittle. Lindsay is an author of a book called Good Night, Mr. Van Gogh, Vincent Van Gogh. And it's a, it's a beautiful story about how to help young people cope with the loss through suicide. And sixth grade students were in this room, and Lindsay met with probably five different groups today, Paul, isn't that right?
Four groups. All of the sixth graders were rotated through about 30-minute sessions. She just looked, it was fantastic. She had such a good message for them. And she had their attention the entire time. And the 12-year-olds, that's not always easy. But she just did a fantastic job with her message. It was very clear, which basically was, if you are sad, know someone who's sad, or is just going through a tough time, please tell someone. Talk to your parents, talk to, trust an adult, teacher, someone here at school. It was really good. And she did a very, very good job.
And this culminates in tomorrow night's activity, which is called, it's called Altogether. And it's a follow-up to the conversation we, as a school community, held back on August 11. And the idea born of that meeting were six different goals. And what we hope to do is to update our community as to where we are with those goals. That gets underway at 5:30 tomorrow night at the Drilless Historian. Pizza will be served, and just a nice opportunity to hear where we are with those goals and grow as a community. And speaking of growing, a book has been selected for our community book read around the topic of mental health and wellness. It's called Reasons to Stay Alive by Matt Haig. This is a community-wide book reading that we're doing. I think I bought it for 10 bucks on, on Amazon. I'm about halfway through. It's a fantastic book. Thank you, Danny Michaels.
And they have copies at the library also.
Yeah, we have asked them to put some copies in. That's going to happen on Tuesday night, April the 9th, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock over at the Mount Hore Public Library. Snacks will be provided. We had some students put together this beautiful poster for us, and we're going to get this up and around town here in the community. So lots of really good things happening in our district, and as always, I'm proud to be a Viking.
And are there any other schools?
Can I just add a little bit to the news?
Yes.
So I just wanted to point out that our Boys Swimming Co-op did take ninth place overall at the state meet, Division One. Very proud of those boys. They worked really hard all season. Our 200 and 400 freestyle relays took sixth place out of 24. And our medley took 19th out of 24. So we had top finishers in the 200 Free, 50 Free, Top 16, 100 Butterfly, and 500 Free. It was a really great swimming weekend.
All right. Moving on to 3D. Any comments? Any criticisms, comments? All right. Moving on to 4D, personal transactions. Second, motion by Jeff, seconded by Diana. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All who carries. Moving on to 5, Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kimberly, seconded by Rod. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right. Now we are going to move on to 6C, Community Alliance for Skilled Trades, CAST.
Welcome. Thank you so much for taking time from your busy schedules to be here this evening. You know, Mount Hore is no shortage of really outstanding people who are willing to step up and lend our schools a hand. And this is just the latest example of that, is it not? And so would you be kind of to come up here to the microphone so that we can record your wonderful voices with the presentation?
Oh, just a moment.
Oh, is this you?
What I have, I have a lot of support.
Come on over.
Yep, somehow I volunteered. Hi, everybody. Trust you, right? Thank you very much for having us tonight. Go ahead, can I present?
Yes, it's, it's up here on the internet, on the touchscreen, and then we also have it on there aboard the docks. Is this not it?
Nope, that's not it.
I went, oh. I could try to win that one.
Sorry about that.
No problem whatsoever. All right. Well, thank you again for having us here tonight. We're here representing another group that we lovingly call CAST, the Community Alliance for Skilled Trades. And who am I, how can I move forward trying to just let you know when I need to go?
Yeah.
Okay. That's perfect. Okay. So my name is Jessica Drexler, and I am a business growth and marketing specialist who works on the, as a member on the board. And so as I mentioned, I come to, to do this myself. But I'm here representing a really great group of people that are local business leaders and owners in our community that rely on skilled trades workers to run our businesses every day. We're also parents and coaches and mentors of these students as well. So we have a vested interest in what's going on and helping attract more kids and create awareness about skilled trades. So up on the board is our last names of people on the, on the team that you probably recognize, they work in the skilled trades. But this is quite representation of just people who care about our students in the community. So just a little bit about how we started. We, it's been, we're just shy of the year when we had our first get-together in March last year. And then the board was formed in October. And then we partnered with Economic Development Corporation for our 501(c)(3) status shortly after that. So we thank those folks for helping us out with that. And we are going to be looking very soon in the future to be establishing that for ourselves. Good luck. So my cast, so as business leaders in this community and parents of these kids, we're very much committed and passionate about helping build awareness of what opportunities exist in the skilled trades. Not just with, with the kids, but also those who influence, who have the ability to influence and help guide our kids towards what you'll hear us call a right-fit careers. You know, helping them find their path, whatever it may be, and being there to support them through that. So as business leaders who work in this industry, oftentimes you come across misconceptions, misperceptions, and lack of understanding about what that truly means. And even to the point where a stigma exists of what it might look like to go into the trades. I, I have done marketing and business growth in, for companies that are responsible for hiring and employing and delivering services that rely on these trades. And you know, sometimes people just don't fully understand what that all entails. You know, if you look at the stats, somewhere along the lines of 47% of all jobs held by people will be replaced potentially by technical, by technology and computers and things like that. And there's going to be people that need to run those machines. And so we're really just trying to help build awareness for what that looks like in those lucrative careers. So one of the questions we want to ask ourselves is, so who is the right fit for a skilled trades career? And essentially, I just have been watching the Breakfast Club with my 13-year-old, with Chloe Segal, and made, I kind of paused on this image and thought, you know, who isn't the right fit for a career in the skilled trades? I think that one of the stigmas that have happened is that people have kind of created an image of what somebody looks like that might not be pursuing a four-year college degree or might be going to do a apprenticeship program. So we want to help everybody understand that, you know, if you're, if there's really good quality jobs available out there, you would like to pursue that path. Our primary areas of focus are revolve on the school, the community, and businesses, which we'll talk more about in a moment. But we really wanted to point out here tonight that we really do share the school board's vision. And it wasn't until after we worked on developing our goals, which we'll share here with you in a minute, that we stepped back and wanted to look to see where the alignment might be with the school board. And we found, as you hear in a minute, that there was, interestingly enough, it was almost semi-stuck on the line of supporting your pillars of work and operation, which, you know, the well-being of the student, the critical of the child, and just giving, helping them see the opportunities that exist for themselves, the facilities and finances for the school district, community engagement for sure, and then also promoting learning growth for the students. So with that, I will dig into just sharing what the goals are. And I think we have a handout that have the mission and divisions to do some, or?
Yes, it does kind of.
So we're not going to read through those, but you'd have them if you would like to read them. So goal number one, working to fill the gap of the workforce in the skilled trades. As I mentioned, you know, we're business leaders who employ skilled trades workers every day. So having kids that are career-ready coming out of school, which I think is one of your values and your missions, is to, and we can do that by helping engage sooner with these students to show them opportunities that might exist. Number two would be to support who might be struggling to find the right fit in a traditional academic career path or the classroom environment. We have some really awesome teachers here in our community that, you know, work with these kids in hands-on and in the technical environment every day. And so the sooner that the business community can connect with these students and helping them, you know, develop career interests that might be in alignment with what they need down the road, the better for the employers and for our community. And from a behavioral, mental health aspect, which is also one of your mission, sort of mission in the school district as a whole, and even to help kids that realize, to realize that even if they might not be thriving in a traditional setting, that, you know, that doesn't mean that they're failing. That there's, you know, different learning styles and different opportunities that will help, that you very much can find a path to a very lucrative career that you could happy doing when you graduate high school. And then number three would be building awareness with the support network for these students. So I think to, you know, the conversation that our, our advisors have to have with parents and, you know, out there in the community, talking with employers and things like that. And any way that we can help make that conversation easier by building awareness, I think is a win for everybody. And I think sometimes, you know, helping parents see that, even if they're sitting in those meetings and hear that, you know, maybe a career path or a apprenticeship program is maybe a better fit, or maybe, you know, for the student is showing the greatest strength of that, that's okay, that's better than okay. And just really help them find their right fit. And then finally, to sort of resource for the school. So one of the things that we've been really sensitive towards is that we don't want to come up with a whole bunch of ideas that are going to cause extra tax on the resources and time of, of the people who are already working so hard in our school district to support these kids. We want to be here and resource financial or mentor support, whatever it is that is needed, to help further these conversations and help kids align with that. Successes today, we just want to highlight those really quickly. So there's been a couple of things, this is just a sampling, but we were able to get involved and help partner with the development of the facility. We were also able to get involved and help get a welding grant for a welding lab secured in a very short amount of time. We were able to place an apprentice, Zach Young, was looking for an opportunity. And in just a few days' notice, one of our members stepped forward, and we helped create a welding apprenticeship with Liam Yoder at Sinar. And that's all going pretty well. So that was really neat. It was, it was in action. It just, it came together just as a vision of being, to help create the alignment between opportunities in the community and then our student, and the students. And then also with the skills, introduction of the Skills USA program this year. Just want to flip aside. One of the things that we were able to do just recently was help prepare some kids for a competition that they participated in last weekend. They were a little uncertain of some of the skills that were needed. And so some of the members of the, of our room came together and did a mock scenario for them so that they could practice and get ready. So pretty cool stuff. Lastly, I just wanted to talk about, you know, where can we go from here so that there's an understanding of how we can continue the relationship and build a relationship, I guess, and continue the conversation about how we can help. So things that we can do, our fundraising for equipment. These people already had some opportunities to supply some equipment for the, for some of their classes, for training. We can help fund field trips, teacher education if needed. If there's something that they want to round out the skill set with, or recruit them, however it may be. We're working on developing a scholarship program for students. We can provide guest speakers. We can bring students out to job sites and show them the real world in action of, you know, what something, a skill that they're learning in the classroom might look like in the real, real world. We're going to be looking to host that in our community. And also be a resource by sharing the trends of what's really happening out there in the job force and what kind of skills are going to be needed as kids come up. As far as the community goes, you know, just being a resource for promoting awareness. Again, we talked about with the parents and those people who are influencing our kids every day. And just focusing on, can we share your passion, you know, and the need for the importance of focusing on that mental health piece, helping kids find their place to thrive here in our community. And then finally, with the businesses, just reaching out to those kids sooner, building that relationship, letting them know that, you know, we're here to coach and mentor, and that there's a win for everybody down the road where they're coming out of school and we have opportunities for them. So what we'd like to, you know, our, our ask here tonight is to ask you, how can we help? And, you know, we have this mission in place, and we're very much, you know, our success is built on your success. And so, you know, if there's areas that you feel that we can help us fill, we'd like to know what those are and continue the conversation. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to say thanks for a great presentation. And even more fundamental than that, thanks for the, for the great job that you're already doing. I mean, the story about helping our, our students prepare for Skills USA, really doing that, turning on a dime and getting that done really, really quickly, I think speaks well for your group and the future of your group in terms of being able to really, really help kids. So, so thanks for getting together to found this group, and, and thanks for the job that you're doing already to help kids.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Just wanted to say this is an extraordinary first year of existence. You've done so much already. We're lucky to have you as a partner. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And that segues really nicely into Skills USA's presentation. Come on up.
Hi, so I'm Nadia Wallawick, and I am Mount Hore High School's Skills USA Secretary for our school's chapter.
And I'm Zach Young, I'm the president for the chapter.
And I'm Tess Purin, I'm treasurer for the chapter.
And Lintar. So Skills USA at our school is in its first year. And in this first year, we have learned, I think all of us, especially as officers, have learned a crazy amount about how it works. And that's just here, we're, we could talk to you about.
Yeah.
So Skills USA, so skills are in demand. There is a huge gap between the skills, the trades that are needed and who is actually employing those people. There is, there is a shortage of skilled workers. And worker with, workers with the right skills are highly sought after and highly paid. And Skills USA's mission is to help obtain, students obtain and develop the skill they need to succeed.
So what is Skills USA? As Nadia just said, our mission is to help our student members become world-class workers and responsible and consistent citizens.
The core values are integrity, responsibility, citizenship, service, and respect.
Skills USA is a professional organization for students in technical skilled service occupations, including health occupations. Skills USA is also an association with more than 300,000 members in all 50 states and three U.S. territories. And it also offers leadership, leadership, citizenship, and character development programs and activities.
So percentages of companies planning to teach the following key skills for the place in the next three years, these are the things that employers are wanting in their place, and that's what Skills USA is trying to teach us. So the Skills USA advantage is, the involvement enhances technical education programs. And Skills USA activities will develop the skills and attitudes that will set you apart, such as a positive outlook, self-esteem, desire to excel in work, and the ability to work with others. And if you look, the picture is of our team engineering challenges, challenges team this year, and they had to create a machine that would test us on this team.
Yeah, so one of the things that we learned was, it was kind of a, how do you say? Like a freestyle where they just gave us an engineering prompt, and we had to build something. So on this team was me and two other Skills USA members. And we came up with that, and we ended up getting second place for our design.
Against lots and lots of other schools. So it was very. Oh, that's okay.
All right, so Skills USA, we have tons of partnerships along with like the unions and stuff. If you follow them on Facebook, you'll see that they have like collegiate level and they have competitions that you can get employed at if you do well. Some of the stuff that I know going into, into that I've heard about going into MITC welding program next year is that they do have a Skills USA team that will travel down competitions and stuff. Employers are there if that's what, if you're looking for a job at that point. And so, so employers around the country know off Skills USA, and they know what we are doing. And so they, they tend to pick up kids from, from our organization and hire them, hire them from us.
And our local CAST organization that just built before us has been such a wonderful partnership in helping with funding and with other issues that arise from being our first year as a team. They're just so wonderful, and we're so lucky to have that partnership.
So the Skills USA program of work is professional development. So the award-winning curriculum of the professional development program and career skills education program. These programs teach employability skills, including communications skills, ethics, conflict resolution, time management, goal setting, and more. So then another program of work that they have is community service. So it's like, yeah, community service instills lifetime commitment to community service, promotes goodwill and understands among, and understanding among all segments of the community, and teaches the importance of teamwork. The program of work we have is social activities. Skills USA works to increase cooperation in the schools and community, improve self-esteem by providing healthy outlets, and students feel like they're part of a team and like they belong. We also have ways and means. Chapter fundraising activities support the chapter's yearly projects.
Which currently for us has been lots of concession stands.
We also have public relations. So we're trying to help change public misconceptions of study effects of technical education students and programs. And we're also trying to make the public aware of the value in strong technical education programs in our school systems. For employment, students offer job shadowing, mentoring, apprenticeship opportunities, increase student awareness of career options, quality job practices and attitudes, and increased opportunities for employment contact and eventual employment. And then we have competitions. So the premier showcase of career and technical education and the greatest commitment of our corporation, volunteerism on a single day anywhere in America.
So in our chapter, we have 24 student members and two professional members, Mr. Bass and Mr. Lydcreed. And we have monthly meetings on the second Monday of the month. And the leadership team attended the Fall Leadership Conference on October 14th through the 15th in the Dells. And there's us. We have, we have lots of fun too. We're serious, but we have lots of fun as well. And 10 student members competed at the district competition on December 3rd in, in Portage. And we had three events with people who placed in the top three. And nine student members were registered, registered to compete at the district competition, but we had to cancel because we had a school delay. And four student members competed at the teamwork's competition on February 14th through the 16th at West Alice. And that was the event that the CAST team mentioned.
So we have worked three concession stands to fundraise for our organization. We are active on social media to let students and community know what we're doing. We have an Instagram page, a Facebook, and a Twitter, you know? Yeah, and a Twitter. And we will be working with Amy Kennedy, Wisconsin Director of Skills USA, to achieve the Certified Excellent Program Award.
So registration is now open for the state leadership and skills conference on April 30th and May 1st in Madison, which we planned to have the majority of members participate in. And something I think, like going back to our public relations, something that I didn't realize, so I joined the tech, the technology education field last year. I started in my first tech ed class. I was a tiny little freshman girl, having no idea what I was doing there. And I think something that we're really trying to work towards is making sure that everybody realizes that they have a place in technical skills. And we have events at competitions, like I compete in prepared speech and culinary arts. That competes in welding. Like, those are so far apart, and it doesn't matter what you're good at. If there's something that you enjoy and you're passionate about, Skills USA has an event for it. And it's really nice to have a community where I feel like all of us feel like we belong.
So for more information, the phone number we use is 73777-8810. The website for Skills USA is www.skillsusa.org. And.
We are obviously the local Skills USA chapter.
Thank you, Brad.
Great job.
Do you guys have any questions?
So, if you'd be okay if I say something?
Yeah.
Um, most of you guys don't know me. Actually, I think the only one I believe in is Hilarious. My name is Tyler Bass. I'm first-year teacher, new tech ed teacher here. And I, with the help of Mr. Life Creed, was able to start Skills USA this year. And I can't tell you how difficult it's been with everything going on in the school, but having our officer team and these amazing kids, I mean, it makes my job 10 times easier. So, um, then thank you to the CAS group and all the people that are helping us. We, we really need it. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Tyler.
So if a student wanted to get involved, do they have to be maybe a freshman, an junior, sophomore? You can be any age.
Yeah, I'm a freshman. I'm a sophomore. Zach's a senior. We are planning for your new event as well.
And if they wanted to join, do they just show up at a meeting? Or what, what would, if someone wanted to join, what would they do?
Uh, at the start of the year for like the freshman, the eighth grade only session.
Okay.
We have a booth and we have a lot of, over the announcement and stuff. Uh, we have, we announce like meeting time at the start of the year and then stuff.
So the beginning of the year is definitely ideal, but we're definitely.
Can we take anybody?
Be serious. We take everybody. We. All right, well, thank you very much. All right, so we're gonna jump around now to seven B, which is the consideration of the FFA Canadian fishing trip.
I'm Grant Shaw. I'm the President of the Mount Hore FFA chapter.
Hi, I'm Zanish Lek and I am the Vice President of our Mount Hore FFA chapter.
Hi, I'm Trina Dearden and I am the reporter of the Mount Hore FFA chapter.
Hi, I'm Katie Ashbar and I am the Secretary of the Mount Hore FFA chapter.
And we are asking your permission to go on our 52nd annual FFA internship to jet late up in Ontario, Canada. And it's a seven-day fishing trip. We are leaving June 16th as Father Day and we're getting back the next Sunday. So we take a paravent out there. We are taking about 40 students and chaperones up this year. So.
Uh, so this is a really big thing with our entire chapter. We all take part in this. Some of us, uh, we help get all the food ready, some of us get the bait and the ice, and we get the tents and we all have to come together and figure out what we're gonna do. As we get up there and once we've arrived, we, first thing we do is we set up tents, you know, cause, um, and after that, we kind of just start fishing. And we fish throughout the entire week and whatever we catch, we eat for dinner that night. And we usually have two sandwiches for lunch or so. Um, but we do a lot together. Like we play mujter and we like go and hikes to see the big waterfall. And we can go canoe games, swimming in like the little area. And it's a great time. Um, although the last day is always the worst day because by then you're always, you're really tired and you're like, wow, I do not want to go. So, you know, it's, you have to be taking the tents down, but on our way back we come and we're all super tired, but we always get all of our stuff packed up anyway, you know? So it's probably the best week so far because we fish like 12 hours a day.
Do you guys have any questions?
What, what annual is this?
52nd.
52nd annual. Very impressive. Second.
All right, motion by Jeff, seconded by Diana. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have fun on your trip.
Thank you.
All right, now we will jump to seven C, consideration of the DECA competition in Lake Geneva, March 3rd through the 6th.
Okay, hello, school board. My name is Marad Azar and I am currently serving as our Wisconsin DECA's Vice President for Event Management. Um, so I'm a state officer this year. I'm incredibly involved in DECA and I'm here today to ask for your guys' permission to be able to go to our state career development conference, which is in Lake Geneva. The 3rd through the 6th is when the entire chapter will be going. I will be there from the 28th through the 6th because I am a state officer. Um, and there is also planning that goes in behind the fence. And as my own position as event management, I go in, organize, and plan all of our statewide events. So this is my biggest event and it's also my last of my term sadly. Um, so I'm here today for asking for your permission and I would love to answer any questions you guys have. Um, we do have three different projects going this year. We have a public relations project, an entrepreneurial promotional plan project, um, which is the event I'm competing in. And then we also have a learn and earn project, as well as someone did a group chapter project too. Um, and then all of our competitors are also competing separately, individually in their respective categories. Um, and we have a ton of people at districts, so we had 21 students advanced to state, um, which is really awesome and we're super proud of it. And we're really hoping to eventually come back in a few months and ask for your permission to go to international, um, which this year will be in Orlando, Florida. So it's a pretty fun destination this time. So yeah, if you guys have any questions, I would love to take them.
Hold on.
No, go ahead.
We do have a discussion. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Diana. Any discussion?
So I did have a question. Tell us a little bit, I guess this is really fascinating. How does a competition work? And what is, what does it look like?
Absolutely. So individual competition is actually you grow in, you have different series events. So you have anywhere from automotive, automotive services to business administration events. I compete in retail merchandising. Um, we got food marketing, all sorts of different events. There's a wide range. You can do team events. You can also do individual where you would just go in by yourself. Um, so it's structured where you take a cluster test. So everybody takes a cluster test based on their series event. Um, I compete in the marketing cluster test. So it's a 100-question test. You have 60 minutes to complete it. Um, and so that's kind of the first big part of your score. Um, the second part of your score is you have two role plays that you compete in throughout state. Um, so you will go into the first role play, which is the scenario you get on the day of the competition. You walk in, you have 15 minutes to look at your scenario, reflect on the ideas, come up with your own plan. I love to use SWOT analysis charts. It's probably my favorite. Um, if anybody knows what that is, they're super exciting. But yeah, I love competition. I competed last year in retail merchandising and qualified in that as well as my project category. Really hoping to go qualify again this year because it's pretty exciting. As for the presentations for projects, um, what a project is, some project categories have tests that you have to compete in with your partners. Um, you can have one to three partners for a project event. Um, the event I'm competing in this year is with my partner that I've had. If you guys remember her, from freshman and sophomore year, we competed in the entrepreneurial promotional plan. And we actually ended up getting seventh in internationals with that. So we're competing with it again this year and have an additional teammate, Sydney Flaherty. If you know her, she's on the staff as well. Um, we have some girls doing the public relations project, which is a different thing. Um, I haven't really done one of those recently, so it's pretty awesome. Um, what you do is you have 15 minutes in front of a judge to give your entire presentation on what your project is. And then they ask you questions, you have a discussion, and you just want to wrap it all up and you want to use your 15 minutes to the best you can. Competition is probably my absolute favorite part of DECA and it is a huge part of my state officer role. I've made a ton of new competition preparation materials this year for Wisconsin DECA. Um, so all 11,000 members that are in Wisconsin DECA are under, you know, everything that I do and it's pretty insane to think about. Um, but yeah, they've been utilizing those resources as well.
Thank you. Great, awesome.
Any other questions?
May I just quickly comment? Madam Vice President of Marketing, she happens to be, by the way, our student of the, of the week for our business op. And for many reasons, can you tell how you're connected to a business here in town?
Yeah, so I work for Lindsay Bauer of Wordrush. Um, she's my best friend. Lovely. Um, I go in there almost every day after school and prepare for workshops, help her run her business. Um, she is an entrepreneur and I obviously have a passion for entrepreneurs. Um, so it's really awesome to be able to work side by side with her and have that mentor relationship for sure. Um, along with my other business application students, we also have a classroom the day that we attend. Um, and Thompson's our teacher, she's also our DECA advisor, and she's also the second mother to me. She's wonderful. So, um, but yeah, we have that position. And so what I do is I just work side by side with my business owner to kind of learn the trades of skills running and controlling your own business. Um, and that's been really awesome as well.
Your distinction, Jim, you can tell how poised she is just even hearing your presentation skills. You haven't even left yet for competition. You've made us proud. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, so we have a motion by Jeff, seconded by Diana. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have fun on your trip. Good luck.
And if both the trips could come back and tell us how it went and.
Oh, yeah.
I always like to see the pictures. Yeah.
They'll come back when you're done.
Now we are going to jump over to seven A.
Well, um, thank you. We've developed a resolution that I would ask the board to approve. The resolution is in support of current technical education. Um, a lot of what you've heard about tonight and, and a lot more as well. You'll see detail in the whereas statements, highlights of our career and technical education programs, um, really starting in the ELC and primary center all the way up through the, through the high school. And so we, we'd like the board to consider this resolution as a way of recognizing, um, all the programs, teachers and staff and students in career and technical education. I'd make the motion to approve.
All right. All right, it's motion by Brad and seconded by Jeff. Any discussion?
Brad, thanks for putting this together.
Yep. All right, seeing none, we have a motion by Brad, seconded by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that will go out.
Is it possible for us to invite our new team leader to our career and technical education program? Bart, Life Creed is here. Hi Bart. Welcome. I'm gonna put up a nice worksheet with your team put together. You'll introduce the rest of your.
I'll introduce everybody. I won't be as nice as Jessica, so I'm gonna ask everybody, whoa. Except Tyler just introduced himself, but I'm not sure if everybody knows everyone that teaches in this department. So in middle school, family consumer science, we have Barb Rodeau. Middle school technology engineer, Tim Kember. Joey Weber is middle school business and also high school business. Sydney Williams is high school family consumer science. Honey Thompson is high school business. Anne Mallon is high school ag, along with Doc Armit, who has not appeared. Um, we also, Michael Cassidy comes here tonight. He's a high school business teacher. And then we have Tyler Bass and myself at high school technology engineering department. I listed a number of things, good things that have been happening in the past year that are going on. All sixth graders get two quarters of business at the middle school. All sixth and seventh graders get a quarter with both Tim and Barb at the middle school. And the eighth graders have electives and they see about half of the eighth graders over the course of the year, just on an every other day basis. That's at the middle school. At the high school, we have 41 different course offerings in all four of our different departments that we have for the kids. We offer science credit through DPI crosswalks and we add dual credit through the Wisconsin Technical College system. Um, we're continuing to see large enrollment in our departments. We're seeing really strong projected growth for next year. Um, so students are getting the message. And we're gonna have to provide a lot of different sections to meet their demands. Um, we have a number of career and technical student organizations, which you've seen here tonight, our amazing kids with DECA, FFA, Skills USA. And that gets about 300 different kids in a high school along with those three different organizations. So that's amazing. The partnerships we have with the community, Kayla was just recently telling us that for the last year, she's got about $12,000 in local donations from different communities, businesses and people. For our FFA, the CAS group, which has been tremendous for those Skills USA. We have all these different partnerships that are going on. It's been awesome. It's very exciting for us. We're growing, we're changing. We have huge community support, as you can see, the new facilities. A lot of that is going to benefit us. We're gonna have new equipment, new technology, lots of new resources, new curriculum. It's all, it's pretty exciting as we move forward. The other night we had, um, gosh, what's her?
Yeah.
From Dane County Youth Apprenticeship.
Dane County School Consortium.
And when he was met with us, tomorrow night, there's a parent meeting about youth apprenticeships in Dane County. And our school has the most registered parent-student combinations of any school in Dane County. So we're seeing that growth and we're seeing those opportunities for kids. So thank you for your support. Thank you for passing the resolution, considering this and having us here.
Well, thank you guys for everything that you do because these kids wouldn't be doing all these things if it wasn't for all of the effort. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm staying for back to six A.
All right, well, in light of all the white fluffy stuff that we see outside, I'm gonna take us back to a day in August where there was sunshine and it was blazing hot and we had to wear sunglasses because it was just beautiful sunshine outside. And Dr. Scler would mind forwarding to that slide that paints the picture. On August 8th, we had this wonderful group of our new Vikings that were welcomed. It was their official orientation day. The energy in the room is something that you almost can't describe, right? Cause it's excitement, nervousness, but really the culmination of work that started about a year ago in January brought us to that, that moment where we had, the room filled with that positive energy. So I begin with that picture because it helps bring to light the data that we'll see on the next few slides. Um, for starters, it's important to look at the number of candidates that we see in our candidate pool. And this comparison shows the difference between the last three years. Um, as you can see, with the total number of applicants, we had a, an increase in 61. So we are very fortunate for that. Um, what I do want to point out is the number of support staff applicants. However, we did see a decrease in 88 candidates. So when Maria was talking about SWOT analysis, anytime you're doing strategic, um, work, you want to do a scan of your environment. And that takes us to the next slide. With data, and this is from the DPI. This came out when there were changes regarding licensure. And this had to do with just the pure number of enrollment in prep programs. So as you can see from the data, Wisconsin was not unique. We saw a decrease all across the board and specifically 35% decline. Now this data is only out of 2016. So I suspect that as we continue to see this data come out, that we will see that decrease. But a very stark contrast is something that will help in explaining kind of why we're seeing those candidate pools decrease. Another important number to consider, we are doing that scan, is the unemployment rate. And of course, you probably have heard the many news stories of the record low number of unemployment. In Dane County specifically, it's 2%. And the good analogy that I had found and come across is usually when you consider the number of people that are available to work, unemployment is about 4%. That's kind of your, your norm or your baseline. So seeing that number 2%, the analogy is we're basically begging people to work because of that record low number. of that record low number. So taking all of that data and seeing our trends just in general, we know we have to work harder. And part of that is understanding how our successful candidates have learned about our opportunities. And in this particular site, I'm very, very proud. WECAN, which is the applicant tracking system that school districts across the state of Wisconsin use, so that continues to be the number one source. But we found when we brought those candidates out and we asked them how they learned about those opportunities, the number two was sourcing that our HR team is doing. So we're being very proactive, again, working smarter and really trying to find candidates even before sometimes we have an opening. So what are we doing to help in increasing that quality candidate pool? Certainly different methods, but this is helping us evaluate the effectiveness of those methods. The one thing that we can all relate to is when you take the time to fill out your job application, do your cover letter, update your resume, and you research the district organization that you're applying to, and you send off that resume or cover letter into this black hole, and you just wait. And sometimes you hear something, sometimes you don't. So what I am proud about our district is how much we understand the candidate experience and how important that is, especially as we're facing a very competitive world. So we ask candidates that are successful to come onboard with us to give us feedback. First of all, can you rate your experience from zero to five, with five being the highest value? And you can see over the last couple of years, they're rated very highly. And that's on purpose. That's the efforts that we're putting towards making sure that that candidate has a good experience when they apply to our positions, when they interview with us, and they get to know and have a good feel of our culture, so they know what to rate fit for them. One thing I also want to touch on with the candidate and recruitment data is just how outstanding our hires have been in this last school year especially. We saw the picture of that group in August. That's just our faculty. We also brought on support staff, administrator, and we really had the cream of the crop. And I want to take the time to also commend our administrators, our principals, our hiring administrators, because they really have that keen eye for talent and brought in a group that is making us ultimately better. And then just to touch on our rates of resignation retirement, because you know, we talk about how there's such an increase in competition and so really organizations are putting a lot of focus towards that. We have been very fortunate. We had, the retirement data is up to date year-to-date for 2019. And as you know, January 15th was our deadline, so that number is pretty solid, but we are seeing some resignations this year-to-date. We're gonna continue to monitor this data to see if there is any trend. And then the other piece that's important to mention is our exit survey. So anyone leaving the organization, we provide them an opportunity to also give us feedback, to let us know where are some areas that we should put some focus towards and then also to know if we're doing right.
Cindy, do you think you could help provide some context as to what positions we're getting resignations in typically? Are they, they're not teacher positions typically, they tend to be more support staff positions?
Support staff, yep.
Any themes throughout that?
Great question. Definitely our support staff is where we are seeing those higher resignations. You know, it's kind of hard to tell without having a longitudinal analysis, sometimes you're gonna see a fight. But you know, truly where special education, pure professional might be a classification where we are seeing that higher attrition.
Tell everybody what you're doing Thursday night.
Yeah, so Thursday night, it's a duo between Dr. Salero and myself. We're gonna be representing the Mount Corvaree School District at the Wisconsin Educator Recruitment Fair, or WERF. It is a statewide recruitment fair, so it's at the Minota Terrace, which is wonderful. And there are districts from Alaska, from Colorado, really nationwide, that are coming into our state to also compete for talent. So we're very fortunate to represent such a wonderful district and it's really a pleasure when we are there and we get to talk about all the great things that you saw today and all the great things that are going on in our schools.
Thanks for being done as usual, Cindy.
Any questions?
I have a question. So the candidate experience rating, is that just given to people who are hired? No? So it's every applicant gets that?
Typically.
Or every applicant that makes it to a certain level?
Yeah, typically we do see the response from the candidates that are hired on. But even then, you know, I still feel like we're getting valuable feedback because you know, they, the way that we post the questions and how the survey is administered and we look at the feedback that we've received. But yeah, it's generally speaking, the responses that we receive are candidates that have been successful.
But you ask everybody though? Most everybody's reached a certain point?
Yep.
Okay. Only the people who respond.
Any other questions?
I want to go on page four, the candidate pool comparison. I'm just curious if you know off the top of your head or if you have it there, the breakdown of positions for the upcoming year, certified staff versus support staff? Only because the number of applicants for certified staff was quite a bit higher and the number of support staff applicants was quite a bit lower. Is that in any way related to just the number of postings in each of those categories or not? Has that been pretty consistent?
I think it ranges. So I put just the raw number of total postings to see, because I wondered when we looked at the data if it was just because we didn't have some postings since previous year. So I just have the total number of postings in there, but you know, certainly we could pull together the data. I think it's harder to do little apples to apples comparison too initially, just because there might be some postings that we do one year and then have the other that might have more applicants.
I just wondered if like in comparing the last couple of years, if our number of certified staff openings has dramatically gone up, then obviously we'll see more, I would hope, see more applicants for those.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to 7-8, consideration of petition to alter school district boundaries from Wisconsin Heights School District to Corvaree School District.
Board members, this is in Applebee's. Hi, families in town, hi. How are you doing today?
Good.
Good, welcome.
So I'm April Hall. I have my husband Chad and my daughter Brynlee, who is five and will be entering kindergarten next year, and Corlin who's three, here today. And yeah, as you said, we're petitioning to move our school district boundaries from Wisconsin Heights to Mount Corvaree. Back in July, we bought a house that includes four parcels. Actually, one of those parcels is included in the Mount Corvaree School District. And so we want to alter the line dramatically, but the other three school districts including our house are in the Wisconsin Heights School District. We're proposing to alter the school district line. You know, the big thing for us is that Mount Corvaree has really become our community. When we moved out here back in July, Mount Corvaree is a little bit closer to us. Mount Corvaree has a lot of resources. Our healthcare providers, our inventors are all here in Mount Corvaree. And also, we've also found daycare for our other children, after-school care. The Wisconsin Heights District unfortunately isn't able to offer that to us. And as two working parents, me working in healthcare, I have patients every week, I need very stable daycare for both my, for after-school care as well as for my other children. And so, you know, Mount Corvaree just offers a lot more services. You know, also, we as well as Mount Corvaree School District, you guys are a little bit bigger than Wisconsin Heights, a little bit or a lot bigger than Wisconsin Heights. And so, yeah, I think the school is amazing. As we saw today, you guys offer a lot of great opportunities. You know, you sell in the music opportunities, athletic opportunities. In talking to teachers, they always said, you know, look at the class sizes, that is a big thing. Mount Corvaree offers the lowest class sizes in the whole region. And we've just heard amazing things about the Mount Corvaree School District and would love to be a part of you guys.
Thank you for considering this, we appreciate it. You know, we have many options out there. We do have a lot to celebrate. Thank you for thinking about what it is, so thank you. And board members, as I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you folks had an opportunity to talk with Wisconsin Heights. And as you may have heard through my podcast this week, I did get a chance to speak with the superintendent in Wisconsin Heights. And as you might imagine, they were in the position we were a year ago at this time. But certainly that doesn't preclude the board from making a decision they think is in the best interest of the families.
So just so I clarify, okay, so the square is the house, right? And the whole big part is the land.
Correct.
And the little bit on the other side is already in our district, right?
That's right. The statute calls for wherever you lay your head is where you are assigned to a school district. And so the house right now, as I understand it, is in the Wisconsin Heights area, yet some of the land is in our boundary.
Has this been considered by Wisconsin Heights School Board?
Yes, and they have declined.
It seems from our village's point of view, it's almost a resharing responsibility for them to decline, since it's just taking money from their children. It's a very responsible.
So if they decline and we say yes, then what happens?
Then the family has the opportunity to appeal it to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction and they make a final determination. I believe the value of the land is somewhere, or the assessed value of the land is somewhere in the neighborhood of $560,000. So it's significant, obviously, to Wisconsin Heights School District.
Where are the closest other residents to your, are there, are those dwellings on that map?
On the back of the sheet that I gave you, all the parcels include how we believe in March and the whole of the HHS of Heights. So there are some that go further north of us, so this is the border that is running northwest. So you can see there's some over on County F and Ryan wrote there.
From the north?
Yeah, other side should show the bus route as well as the stop sign. Yeah, that's a big, we know we can open enroll. We definitely already applied for that, but the big thing is, you know, we wouldn't have the bus service if we weren't in either of those school districts. You know, that factors in as well, as books, working parents, just having the bus service and stuff.
And there is also risk of two of the road being broken. Three decisions open and two others, so if there are more applicants, dead load in.
It's a petition's recommendation to approve the request for a boundary. So we know it will be met with some degree of dissatisfaction by Wisconsin Heights School District.
So how much acreage is involved in your four parcel?
It's totally 70 acres.
70, yeah.
And we'd be fine with some sort of creative, so we should have half of the acreage stays in Heights and, but really decision-wise, where the house is, where the house is.
Yeah.
Shortest road through the border, but on that side.
And your house is about four miles away from the border, so.
What's that?
Your house is about three, four miles from the border line?
Oh no, it's 50 feet from the border line. So just south, so the parcels of the south there is ours and that box is the house, so it's, it's, it's very great.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Danny, seconded by Rod. Any discussion? No, that's okay. It was a motion by Danny and seconded by Rod. Thank you.
I would be glad to go ahead and do it.
All right, so we're gonna do a roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Sorry, Jeff?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
And I'm also.
What we'll do is we'll have our employed clerk, Mr. Hannah, sign up for documentation that you provided here to the students. And then we'll send that out to you. And of course, open enrollment, store factor, we'll completely play that card.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And thanks guys for staying up so late tonight.
All right, moving on to 7-8, consideration of summer school 2019.
Board members, this is a continuation of the conversation we've been having with you, both the Education Committee and board. And we're at a point right now where we think we'd like to be able to move forward in our recommendation for summer school. The budgeting, as referenced in my podcast this week, is really based upon a number of different variables and we're trying to control for those variables as much as possible. But we do think that we can deliver a budget neutral scenario as is required by our board's policies. And so we're asking for two things tonight, for us to begin to put out messaging to our families that we're looking to expand our summer school offerings. And then also to hire a summer school coordinator, which has always been part of our vision for moving us forward. We're happy to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod. Any discussion? That's okay. All right, motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod.
You have to think of the word now. We cut out the fun stuff.
Enrichment.
Enrichment, okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Stuff like six, eight years ago.
Yes.
Because it wasn't getting us any money from the state. So this would be coming fair.
Thank you for asking the question. We knew that we were gonna have a larger period of time this summer for our kids and we were worried about kids with regression and their ability to recoup their instruction over time. And so I asked for our Director of Instruction to begin thinking about what are some ways in which we can expand our summer school offerings, at least in the summer of 2019. As is typically the case with Sarah Straka, everything is done with such detail and consideration that indeed, we are looking to expand our enrichment offerings for kids this summer in kindergarten through eighth grade. And then continue to have remedial offerings for students as well. Kids who might need support in mathematics and in other areas, reading, writing, et cetera. We're looking at doing that in a number of different ways during a number of different periods, starting in June for a period of time and then taking a break during the Fourth of July week, just because we know that that's a week that many of our families travel. And then continue with a second session for our families shortly thereafter. Here again, Sarah's done an exceptional job of coordinating with our contact at the village, Jill Dudley, to make certain that we're not stepping on toes and that coordinated availability of services. And we think we're gonna be able to get to a win-win for both our families and then also the villages' programs as well. So we're really thankful that you're allowing us to even travel down this road, the visionary end of the park.
Any other questions?
A question about the coordinator position, just a, I don't know, kind of logistical question I'm curious about. The hours and the time commitment for the coordinator, would that preclude any current administrators from applying for that position? Do we have administrators that are under 11-month contracts, so they wouldn't be able?
We do have one administrator who is a 11-month contract, but we weren't seeking an administrator. We felt like this was an opportunity for somebody who was aspiring to be an administrator. Many courses of study require that people engage in some kind of work, kind of partnership. And we have successfully interviewed a number of candidates and we have a recommendation for them.
That's what I was worried, does it, would it in any way limit our candidate pool? That's what I was worried, would it in any way limit our candidate pool based on what our administrative contracts are? But it doesn't sound like that'll be a problem, okay.
All right, any other questions? So we have a motion by Jeff, second by Rod, all of whom favor say aye.
Aye.
A vote, all right.
Thank you. This is really exciting, quite a big league for our community and for our district. And again, I'd like to extend my gratitude to Sarah. And for that matter, the rest of our senior leadership team, it's taken a lot of partnership. Let me get to you, yes, I'm excited.
All right, moving on to eight A, so this is comments. Seeing none. All right, nine is our future agenda items. Anybody have anything that's like to add or to note? Ten is our next meeting.
If you don't mind me mentioning, President, that we have a board workshop next Monday night. Five-thirty, we'll get underway with our community and legislative engagement meeting. And this is a meeting that's open to the public. And I'm pleased to announce that Representative Sandy Pope has been invited and has taken us up on our invitation. We'll be meeting at the district office at five-thirty. And then at six-thirty is our board workshop. There is a pretty ambitious agenda. And then, believe it or not, then we have our Board of Education meeting on March the fourth. March the fifth is also an important night for board members as we have our community, I think forum, I guess is the best way to talk about it, on how do we leverage the support of the good work being done in the village, at our EDC, our chamber, and then the school district. And there'll be a little bit of supper and fellowship and then an opportunity to talk about our strategic plans. That's going to take place now at the Grand State Hotel.
Any questions or those?
Did you need RSVPs for that?
They went out yesterday.
You needed, yeah.
If you don't mind, just.
Yeah, okay.
If that doesn't sell you, then the Salerno Italian pasta that I am making, fresh sauce and everything, my friend Crago.
All right, eleven?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second by Rod, second by Diana, all of whom favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.